Sarah, I can't tell if it's back and wrapped on with this.
Not yet, no.
We're not gonna wait, but just curious. All right. Now, we does it look like it's seven?
It looks pretty close.
All right. All right, we're gonna call seven o'clock and go ahead and start. If everyone will please rise and join me with the way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you're all.
Joe Boyd.
Here.
Kevin Kelly.
You're.
Phil Morris.
Here.
Ashley Richard.
Here.
Natalie Schumaker.
Here.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is our consent agenda. It's all items considered to be routine and non-controversial. It includes the minutes from our last meeting in January and includes the financial statements and the payment of bills for January. Were there any questions on anything on the consent agenda? None or entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any final questions or discussions? Not Carol, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yeah.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Next item is the citizens' hearing and we do have a five-minute time limit. Uh, Carol, do you have the sheet?
I do not. Okay, Michael, great.
Mike?
Hi, everybody. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to ask again this year if we can get permission to close down part of the street in Hudson for the St. Jude fundraiser, which will be April the 5th. We're gonna ask that, as we did last year, if we can have permission to close down as early as the 3rd. Depending weather, if you remember, two years ago, we had so much wind that we couldn't get the tent up. And our company tells us, we get it up, we can take all the wind in the world, just getting it up. So we'll, we'll watch the weather, but that would be our request that as early as that Thursday before the Saturday event. That event on Saturday, just a little bit of history. This is our eighth year. Last year, we set another record. We have each year we've done this. We raised over seventy thousand dollars for the kids of St. Jude in about a four-and-a-half-hour period. To date, we're at about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars that we have raised for the kids of St. Jude since we started this event. And so I asked permission to close that down and we will again return the streets to, as we did last year. We filled those holes that they used with asphalt and I entertain any questions that you might have.
Bill, I know Denny isn't here, but I think from his perspective, everything went great last year.
Yeah.
Walking the road off early was fine. Mark, how about from your perspective?
Yes, absolutely. That works fine. In fact, it does make it easier in some ways because that way people are used, I mean, the day of the event, they know that it's already closed. It's been closed for a couple of days and so no problems at all.
I, I would like to say I appreciate Hudson Police's efforts, that day of that event. The fact that they're there, one of the things that we used to face was one of our young ladies from St. Jude would have to travel home with maybe thirty thousand dollars in cash to her home for the weekend and, you know, she's, I don't even know where to put this. So police department has, they let us come down and lock it, they escort us, let us come lock it in their safe until Monday morning where we can take it over to the bank and they'll process it. So I do appreciate that. It means a lot.
Does anybody have any concerns? None? Let's do it. Same as last year. It's great. We thank you and Penny and Tim for coordinating this. It's a great event and we are proud to be able to do a small part to make it a success. And hopefully this will keep going in future years. Seventy thousand dollars last year was really awesome.
I'm just, I, you know, I, I'm about in tears by the end of this event because of how much we've raised and, you know, I'll, I'll tell a short story and then I'll get out of here. That won't ruin my five minutes, but I got involved in.
We know you don't have such a thing as a short story.
I got involved in this when a friend of mine asked me to go to Memphis. And what I thought of Memphis, I thought barbecue, drinking, music, it was gonna be a great time. And there was some of that, but he, he took me on a VIP tour of St. Jude. And unfortunately, they don't do those since COVID, that now it's restricted. But I get to meet with doctors, I get to meet with pharmacists, I get to meet with families while I was down there. And when I came back, I said, I, I've gotta do something for the kids. And it's always been kind of a favorite charity of mine, but no idea the, the impact that they have, so. And of course, I'll tell you, if you're interested, we have a ninety-two-year-old woman who's baking pies for that event. And every year, she bakes two pies for somebody to bid on for a pie a month for a year. And last year, they brought seven, each one brought seven hundred dollars. So if you, it's good pie. So I'll leave it with that. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Anything else that turns up that we can help with, be sure to let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Penny.
Yeah. Carol?
Mike Hayward.
I'm a stranger in the room. Good evening. My name is Mike Hayward and I am a part-time staff member for your new state senator, Chris Belkema. My role is what you call a, what Chris is calling a travel liaison. And I travel from Morris, Morris, Illinois. That's my hometown. Chris lives, if you don't know, Chris lives in Shanahan, which is just east of Morris, is about fifteen, twenty minutes. Although I'm in this role, there's a few others in this role. Chris has every intention of being out in the district as he starts his new senatorial career. He has chosen, though, this travel liaison approach to even get more presence in the district. I'll begin tonight with Senator Belkema's mission statement. His mission statement is lead with love. Three simple words, lead with love. This is indicative of who Chris is and is also faith-based. Senator Belkum has created four goals that will lead him in his office as he represents District 53. The first one, in keeping with his faith, is protect life. Second one is to reduce cost of living in Illinois. Make Illinois a welcoming place to conduct business and then build trust. A way to build this trust is to begin building a relationship. And that's the reason for me here tonight, is to begin a building relationship with, to the little town of Hudson. Excuse me. Since the primary, Chris was, has been working with Senator Bennett in his office in transitioning phase and in using ideas and perspectives that the constituents have, constituency has. And so from building that list, of building that list of about eighty-one items, approximately eighty items or so, that he was looking for potential legislation for this spring session. As he was sworn in on January 8th, he reduced that list down to approximately thirty bills that he will be, there'll be co-sponsoring or sponsoring in the spring session. Chris has been assigned seven committees. Agriculture is one. You have behavioral, mental health, education, labor, revenue, and pensions. Again, Senator Belkum welcomes the district residents to start sharing their ideas and perspectives for future potential legislation consideration. Senator Belkum's offices are in Dwight, Pontiac, and El Paso, beyond obviously the Springfield office. Chris and I want to encourage all of you to sign up for his e-newsletter. So I will be communicating back with you, following up with you mayor, and giving you an email of his official Facebook page and his website. Along with that, I do have what we call a contact card. This contact card is, references his offices, the phone numbers, the addresses, et cetera. Also in the lower right-hand corner, it references a QR code that you can obviously use to also sign up for his newsletter. And I'll leave you, leave those with you. And of course, my screen went blank on me. One second. So to wrap that up, we just wanna appreciate you giving us this few minutes just to introduce ourselves, introduce Chris on his behalf through me. And I do also wanna provide some business cards that I have that'll also provide you, that you can share with whomever going forward. But thank you for the few minutes just to do this.
Thank you. And on behalf of the village, I wanna thank you and Senator Belkema for taking the time and the interest in some of the small communities in your district. I'm not sure if there are other towns in McLean County that are part of your district. It seems like it's kind of an unusual, drawn unusually. So do you include any of Bloomington Normal?
There is a portion of Bloomington Normal.
Portion.
A very small portion, yeah.
So anyway, thank you for showing the interest and for coming tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Carol, is anyone else? Okay, then the citizens' hearing portion of our meeting is closed. Next on the agenda is the, my agenda. And we're going to start with swearing in of a new police officer. And I've asked Mark if he would introduce Micah to everyone here.
Mike, you go ahead. Stand up. We, of course, need to have a replacement as a transition out of my retirement. The goal, of course, I think I made it clear that when I, when I do become mayor, that I'll make Chris the chief. And then we needed to fill a full-time police officer position. And so we did interviews, we, we talked a lot, we did talk to a lot of good candidates. Micah really stood out for us. I think he'll be a great fit to small community. He has experience being a police officer in Pontiac, Illinois. Grew up in Menonk, he's a small-town kid, so he kinda gets the small-town style policing that goes on here. So we're really looking forward to having Micah come on board. Did you wanna say anything, Mike, at all?
Just glad to meet everyone and I'm excited to get started. If you guys have any questions or anything for me to redress, I'm open, but.
Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and proceed with swearing you in as a police officer. Kevin, if you would take a picture for the quill.
I'd say in. Do something, swear.
Do something, swear.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of police officer.
So that's my village, that's my office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Micah, congratulations. We're looking forward to you joining us and we're looking forward to a lot of and for support for coming down here. So thank you. Next on our agenda is swearing in Scott Argus. Scott made it tonight, so we'll move on. Next on the agenda is changes to our pet ordinance. Our pet ordinance is the changes that we're going to do with the ordinance thirteen eighty-eight. The basic changes are to clarify that the residents can only have three, a combination of three dogs and cats, cannot have more. Previously, it said it was an owner. And an owner, if somebody came to live with me, I had three dogs, and my son came to live with me and he had three dogs, he could conceivably argue that he's the owner and so we could have six dogs there. So we are clarifying the wording on that ordinance and making sure that it can't be contested that way, so. Was there any questions on ordinance thirteen eighty-eight, the changes to the pet ordinance?
Sure, you're saying that's the only change. I heard you look earlier, they didn't really find with the department. So that clarification, if you like, the only change.
This, yeah, that's it. The word owner was changed to responsible party.
Okay.
I don't know if Pat's on yet or not, but that was, that's pretty well there. There's a few other minor changes. We made a change to the part about exceptions. Chickens were less of it being okay if they were a certain species, if they were females of that species. But later on, they were banned. And so we changed that to they were banned unless they were allowed, that they were the certain species of hens that we do allow in town. We made that change, clarified that part of it. And that's pretty well there. There wasn't a few worried things and that was it, so.
Just, just curious, how many people do we have buying the licenses for chickens right now?
I haven't checked with any.
There, I think there's five right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It has been higher, I think, in the past, hasn't it?
We've had two that have, that had it and no longer do. So we had up to seven at one point.
The only other thing we did, I agree with everything Dave said, we also had a definition for keeping. Really wanted to simplify the path for prosecution when we have these problems, we're not having to prove up who owns the animal. Then the other issue is keeping, is it temporary, is it permanent? And so we, we kind of closed what could otherwise have been a loophole for exploitation there.
Are there any other questions or comments on this ordinance? If none, look for a motion to approve it.
What was it?
Thirteen eighty-eight.
Make a motion to approve ordinance thirteen eighty-eight, changes to the pet ordinance.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion second to approve the pet ordinance changes. Any final questions or discussions? Not all in favor, please say aye. Or Carol, just go over the call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yes.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is changing the clerk's position from an elected position to an appointed position. Add our attorney has pointed out that most small towns have an appointed clerk rather than an elected clerk. And we didn't have anybody who registered to run for this coming up election anyway. So we have to do both a resolution and an ordinance. So first, is there any questions or discussions on making this change?
What, what will it be, the mayor just pick somebody?
Yeah.
No, approved by the, the board then.
Is it similar to like the treasurer and the police chief?
Yes.
Is it the annual type of?
Yes.
Appointment? Okay.
And by default, if we don't get them every year, they continue their, their position.
Right.
Does the salary stuff have to be defined? Or is that, as far as? I don't think so, Pat. Does the salary have to be part of the ordinance or resolution?
Does not. So when the clerk's appointed, you have to address the salary in a different, or excuse me. When the clerk's elected, you have those rules about when you have to set the salary. Once they're appointed, those rules no longer apply. And you don't have to address the salary when you convert the current position. Now, when you appoint someone, after Allison's term expires, you would address salary at that time. But in neither of the action items on the agenda tonight, do you need to address pay.
Kind of like the treasurer's or the police chief in that regard, because their salaries are not part of the ordinance either. So. Pat, does it make any difference whether we do the resolution or the ordinance first?
It, it doesn't.
Okay, are there any final questions or discussions? If not, will someone make a motion to approve the ordinance or the resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution to change the clerk's, the, the village clerk position to an appointed position.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion, a second to change the clerk's position, the, to adopt the resolution to change the clerk's position from elected to appointed. Any final questions or discussions? Not Carol, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yes.
Now, we have the ordinance, I believe the number is thirteen eighty-nine to move the clerk's position from elected to appointed. So would anybody be willing to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to move the clerk's position from elected to appointed, ordinance thirteen eighty-nine.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
And we have any final questions or discussions? Not Carol, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Natalie Schumaker.
Yes.
Okay, motion and the resolution carry. So the next mayor will have the opportunity to appoint the clerk position. So that will carry forward to the future. Next item on my agenda is discussion on sales tax. I would like to set up a special meeting in March just for the opportunity of residents to come and ask questions about why we, we are looking at having a sales tax for a village of Hudson and what we would do with the additional revenues. My recommendation to the board, if we wanna proceed with this special meeting, would be to have it on Monday, March 3rd. That would give the residents Monday, March 3rd and Tuesday, March 4th to come to our meeting and discuss it. And then the board would have opportunity to talk it over. And if we decide to go forward with it, we could approve it at one of our budget work sessions in March, later in the month. We'll also give residents an opportunity to contact us personally if, if they couldn't make either of those two meetings. So I think there was a request to have a special meeting for this, just for sales tax discussion. And if we hold it off until March, Lynn will be back and she would like to be there for that special meeting. So is March 3rd a okay date for this? It's, okay, I will talk to the quill then and make sure we get this in the minutes for the quill. Yes, I am sending a letter to the quill also, I think published, saying we're gonna have a special meeting and didn't have the date in it because I had to get it sent in before or the cutoff date got in. So, yes, Kathy?
Where?
The meeting will be here, seven o'clock on March, Monday, March 3rd. So that gives citizens two different dates to come and ask questions and discuss it, so. Any questions on the sales tax? And again, if you have more major projects that you think are, would help justify or explain the need for it, send those to me. I started the list, I sent it to everybody a month ago. So. Moving on to the status of the DCO grant, the DCO grant is for thirty thousand dollars. Sarah completed all the paperwork and has everything submitted. The two projects that we're submitting is, one is lining two different tiles, tile at the corner of Southwest Street and Pearl Street. And the second one is a tile that runs underneath Walnut Street near the post office. Both tiles can use lining, especially the one at West at Pearl. That project is twenty-two thousand dollars. The second project we submitted was a new sidewalk to run from Broadway to Pearl Street along Southwest Street. That's the street that has a hill in it, that doesn't have a sidewalk today, runs right next to the school. If you've ever driven there, when kids are walking to school, it's definitely a safety issue. And we talked about getting rid of the hill, then you're looking at a whole lot of money to do that, because you have to have facilities redone, road redone, the water line would have to be redone. So by putting in a sidewalk, we think we can eliminate the safety problems that we have today. So that project is estimated around twenty thousand. So we have forty-seven thousand dollars of projects on a thirty thousand dollar grant. So when we do our budget for next year, we will need to work in some money for one of the other projects to finish it up out of our own pocket. So that's where the DCO, DCO grant money is going. Next item on my agenda is the status of the sewer study. Kevin sent a, an email a little while back, and I keep carving the whole board about concerns about if we do a sales tax, do we also wanna consider new charges for the residents for sewer if we implement a sewer? We did get the financing we need. And so I don't know, the sewer would cost a minimum of fifty dollars a month. If we can get enough financing to get it that low, that would be quite an accomplishment. So, but then I don't know what the rest of the board feels. If we don't want to look at two different fees, new fees for the residents, you know, within a couple of years, then we need to kinda decide that now so we don't submit our request for federal funding for the grants, for the grant money. So.
To get this, this one.
Okay, if Kevin had, if I could recap your concern, or you would, why don't you recap it, Kevin?
Well, I think with, I, I think with the.
Tell me, Mike.
Yeah, I think with the, as I recall, I think there's some things, I think, that I learned since then, that time that I need to report, original point of the fifty dollars per month, that's kind of, that seems like a big ballpark idea for, but that's the goal. I think that's a good goal.
Yeah.
But with the one percent sales tax, as I, I was trying to make the point of the, what type of items are we gonna, uh, is it gonna be, are we tax relief, is it gonna be, is, is it gonna be kind of what, what are we kind of gearing that, that amount for? Is it gonna be like this, a, and I'm throwing this out bars, you know, kind of raised from that type of idea. Is that a portion of that sales tax could be diverted to maybe some of the sewer costs or some other project? It doesn't have to be sewer, it could be other things as well on that, and just kinda look at long-term projects that way. You know, I mean, I, I don't have an answer, but just something looking at it.
Oh, yes.
Long-term, if this money is coming in and this is an additional amount.
Yeah.
Whether or not we're gonna have it or not, but maybe, I don't, I think I've talked to other people on hip-roads and projects and there's other things. And even with personnel too, so.
Yeah, I, I took your email with me, it's totally possible.
Whether we're going to have it or not, but maybe, I don't, I think I've talked to you, other people on the probes and projects and there's other things, you know, even with personnel too. So.
Yeah, I think, I, I took your email with me. It's totally possible. Like we want another cost.
Right.
And I didn't reply to your email because I'll be open to reading back, you know, where else would every discussion go? But I mean, one of the things, and other than the sales tax, and one of the things we could also use it for is to not increase people's water. Right? I mean, we're talking about fifty dollars for sewer, but we're also increasing people's water for a certain set of year. Right? And so maybe we do the sales tax and maybe not do one of those or something. So yeah, we, we need to look at everything together to figure out what money should be used for what. Not take our costs we can afford. Yeah. Okay.
And I think the other part too, there, there goes by too, I know Danny mentioned something about the water mains too, and the old part of town. I think you mentioned that before. It's like, I know that is, there's orange trains and again, it might not be something that we do every year. It's a more mayor decision would help to do that, but maybe, you know, like kind of like a more fuel tax, you don't do something every year, but you might pull that up to a port where, okay, there you have enough funds to do a section of town or something.
I do want to remind the board that as we think about this, you know, we can make recommendations for future boards, but we cannot commit that future boards are going to freeze the real estate tax at the current level. And we can say those of us that will, those of you that will be on the board can say that's like your thinking. And that's actually what vote, but that doesn't bind future boards to decisions that this board would make.
I, I think that would be the same with allocation. If one, if one said we're going to allocate fifty percent to water projects or streets or something for that sales tax revenue, another board can make that change later on, right?
Yeah.
If it did the same thing during, during the budget process, they can relocate those. Yeah.
Okay. So, so my question to the board is, do we want to proceed with the applications for sewer financing from the federal government? That it's going to be a major new expense for, for residents. Uh, I don't know whether we'll be able to get it or not.
Well, I, I mean, if, if somebody wants to, you know, try to get money, that's not going to be really an expense to try to get the money.
Right.
So we can always do that. But yeah, we gotta get a lot of money to make it affordable, I think. So it seemed like anybody say that's impossible unless our new, our new guy in the room, let's just say he's got a bunch of money for us.
I heard that.
I will explain this. Yeah, I hope you break your check, but. Okay, so.
We can always keep looking, but I don't know.
Yeah. So, so okay with the board, is it your recommendation? Go ahead and continue looking for financing grants from the federal government.
Yeah.
I will continue doing that. So my next item on my agenda was a discussion with someone from Chris Paul's office and he's already given us the presentation. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which was the report from Danny. And as all of you know, Danny has flu last week. He's been in some this week. Uh, I don't know. I haven't talked to him yet, so I'm not sure how healthy he is yet. I'm going to try and avoid him for a few days. So uh, there is a lot of viruses, a lot of flu. Uh, Allison is out tonight. She is in Palenta. One of her kids just tested positive for it. So trying to stay healthy. Phil, did you have anything for Danny?
Uh, I just briefly spoke with him yesterday and he said, uh, even though we did get, uh, several amounts of snow, that they did plow it down like eight times, uh, in January. So just, you know, they're out more than, than you think, even if it's just a little bit of snow. And they're out early too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I think the roads have been great this winter here. Yeah. So see what happens tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah. Water breaking from the school was in the last thirty days, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
The water breaking from the school was it, was it in the last thirty days?
It was, it was just the last week.
Well, that was, yeah. That was before thirty days. It was always, they ended in December.
Right before, yeah.
Thirty, thirty first.
No, I thought it was after.
Yeah, because we talked about it earlier last. Okay. Does anybody else have anything from Danny? That will move on to Village Marshall and the EMA Coordinator Chief Cotty.
All right. Everybody should have a copy of, of my report like I, I generally do. At the top, you can see the, uh, statistics. Only really things note the calls for service were rather high in the month of January. We had a lot of assisting people motorists sliding off the road during the snowstorm and everything. Usually our calls for service run between eighty to a hundred and twenty. It was a little high at a, at a hundred and sixty this month. And I attribute it mostly to those, to those bad weather days when we're getting a lot of calls for service. Okay, assist people. Um, you can see the only training that we attended during the month was the GMS IIT training. Okay, we did that on fishing stands. The meetings I attended, the rural chiefs meeting, and then of course, we had several police interview and hiring meetings during the month. And then, uh, the usual reports and rigorous reports. Three people did come in to get golf cart permits. So we're now up to five this year. I finalized our TASER grant paperwork. I think I mentioned that several meetings ago that I applied for a grant uh, through ILEUS and, uh, and we're able to get three new TASERS since our TASERS are very, very old and athletic. Um, but there's a lot of paperwork to fill out for these grants. Okay, so. Um, I believe that's the last bit of paperwork. Don't make me jump through or don't make me jump through before I actually take possession of the, of the TASERS. Uh, we took two accidents. There's two accidents that occurred in the, in the village. I think that's really wonderful. Cause every time that it snows and every time there's an ice storm, I'm like, oh boy, here we go. But we only had two, so that's what we did. Uh, we took two, uh, criminal courts. One was a disorderly conduct that occurred at the sitting bowl. And then we took an online theft by deception extortion court. Which was elect, it was all electronic. So. Uh, two solicitor permits, Weedman Lawn Care Service. I got no complaints about the solicitors from Weedman. I didn't think I would. They're a local business. You know, they have a bricks and mortar, you know, here in, to normal. So. Uh, we did our usual stop sign, school bus enforcement area. Any questions about that report?
Were you assisting with either of the cases earlier this week, the fatality of the Kappa or the Lake Evergreen?
No, no, we did not. Um, when the Evergreen, uh, unfortunate fatality at Lake Evergreen, we were not on duty at that time that that was reported. And then the accident that it happened on two fifty-one, it was, it was just over the line. It was actually Woodford County. Actually, you know, even though I believe, um, Hudson fired that assists with both of those.
Anyone have any, anyone have any questions for Chief Cotty? If you have a way to, to let us know how long these police lights have been, or the street lights have been out. I mean, and just keep getting longer. I know what our company is doing and you can't do anything about it, but.
Right. And.
If residents reported these lights, would it get done a little bit faster?
Um, well, I don't think, well, I mean, if residents want to send emails, seeing them, there's more emails coming in, maybe voting them more. Could be, could be actually. Um, what we do is we do get these from citizens at times, but most of the time it's generated by us. We drive. We may, you know, that, that pass before a board meeting. Driving out at night and noting it ourselves. So there is a couple of them that are on this list that are kind of strange. Washington and Havens and the one, uh, McLean and Bluebird. I consider them to be outages because they don't stay on all the time. They come and go. And also the one at Marion and Broadway. It will flicker on. It'll be on maybe for an hour and then flicker off and disappear. So it's not off all the time, which is really strange, but I put it on the list because I think they need to address this issue. So. Uh, no more questions about that EMA. Um, the sirens went off today. However, the siren here did not go off again. And we may have to rethink about using a different technician. Um, I've called him several times and left messages for the technician and he doesn't respond. And that is the technician that the county uses. So I will meet with Michael Brady about it because we share the cost for EMA. And we might just have to hire, uh, an independent electrician to come out and, and fix that siren. I don't like having a siren out, okay, in the village. And, uh, so I'm going to get with Mike and see about that and see how much it would be to have an independent person do it.
So everyone's aware the siren does go off at noon. So we think it's a reception problem. And if there was a storm, I think you could probably get it set off. Is that correct?
I, I would venture to say, Dave, that no.
Okay.
Wouldn't go on. And the reason why I think that is simply when the technician came out to, to work on it, he disconnected the antenna so that he could, he wanted to put a outside antenna, which I agreed would be a great idea because then it's going to pick up the signal better than being buried inside of a cinder block building. However, he hasn't completed the work. So it's the antenna that I believe is disconnected. Possibly if I stood next to it with our radio, I, I might be able to set it off, but there's no guarantee. And so next month, we will be testing, every couple of times during the year, um, we test our radios and set off the sirens manually with our radios. Most of the time it's done by the county down, down at the Edsta building. And that's what we wanted to do is have them to be able to do it. But anytime I can call them up and say, hey, next month, let us test our radios. And I can see for sure if it'll work. But I, I really don't think of that. I don't.
Some start season over here before we.
Yes. And these, the.
So the technician, uh, is, so the technician is the one the county uses for that? Is there a way that we can leverage the county and say, hey, you know what, we're part of the EMA. We belong to them. We need that. It is the county, it's your admission. Is there a way that we can leverage it? Because for somebody not, for disconnecting an antenna and trying to put something off and not completing the work, I have an issue with that. If somebody is doing all this, better not, you know, do that. But for, if they're not connecting it.
And we had to go that route to get the Lake Bloomington siren repaired.
Okay.
I had to go through the EMA director. The EMA director had to put, put the heat on the person to get out there and, and fix it. That'll be our next option. That could actually be our first option. Um, but if it doesn't, if he doesn't come out, I, I, it needs to be done and up and running by the end of February. The storm season starts in March and I don't want to have a siren down. So if by us putting heat on the EMA director from McLean County and if it still doesn't get done, uh, we're just going to have an independent person work on it.
So, so he, he said that he was there to disconnect the existing antenna, put a new one and utilize one from external.
Yes.
And he said that he wasn't going to, and, and that part hasn't been done yet.
No. Um, in fact, uh, no, it hasn't. He hasn't been back at all. And he didn't. And, and the disconcerting thing is, is that he hasn't returned my phone box, which, uh, I, that's just unprofessional.
Mark, when he initially completed his work last summer, all the sirens were working.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We got them all up and running. So, um, I, I don't have an issue with the quality of work because when he gets it done, it will work. It's just the timing and not, not getting it done when we need to get it done. So.
Any other questions for Chief Cotty? Not thank you.
Well, I do think Chief Cotty, um, going through the interviews, the hiring process and selecting candidates, I know they did a lot of work interviewing officer. Chris. Yes, thank you. Chris, um, did a lot of work on that. So I do appreciate the effort and I thought it would, I mean, relatively smoothly. And, and, and I think, um, by having the meeting with our new officer and, uh, the mayor, I think that was, I think he's going to do well.
Yes.
So thank you for inviting me to that. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Right. Next item on our agenda, we got finance budget contracts. Trustee Lynn, Lynn is not here tonight. Uh, Lynn and I did have discussions for the left. Uh, we have several courses that require annual training. Uh, one is sexual harassment. There is another one. I don't recall what it is right now. Um, Sarah's aware of it. We decided to ask Sarah to track training so that all the employees that are required to do this training get it completed on time. So Sarah will be tracking, training that's mandatory from the state or for federal. So. Uh, does anybody else have any communication from Lynn as far as topics? Now we'll move on to street department. Trustee Phil.
Uh, all I have this evening is to, uh, discuss and, uh, vote on the resolution for the, uh, MFT motor fuel tax. I think some of you are probably familiar with the motor fuel tax. Uh, we have a MFT fund, uh, that we, every year we get money from the state, uh, which, which helps us keep up with the maintenance on our roads. We get, uh, we get gravel. We get salt for the winter to put on the ice. Uh, we get money for, uh, spray patching, some of the tarnished roads. We get money for signs and the hardware for the signs, the posts, sidewalk maintenance. Uh, on like Curryview, the, the concrete streets, uh, crack seal where the joints are on the concrete streets. Uh, drainage, uh, we, we've done a lot of drainage here in town. A lot of it we've gotten through, uh, our, our, our grants. And, uh, we put money in the MFT or, uh, for that as well. That's pretty much it. We do the, the milling. If, uh, you guys are familiar with what we're doing on some of the streets that are narrow in town, we widen them out with the, uh, patches on the sides, like a four foot or five foot patch. So we've been doing more of that than we have spray patching and that seems to be working out pretty good. So. Uh, this is all money combined. So this year, our, our MFT, we've got a program that we put together every year. This year, our program uh, amount is going to be uh, seventy thousand dollars, which is about twenty thousand less than last year. We'll be doing less work on sidewalks this year. So that's, that's the difference. There is probably mostly the sidewalks. Does anybody have any questions on what else MFT might help us with?
You have, you got a whole list of work to do for the year. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's just, it, it's stuff that, that Denny and, and our, uh, engineer have gone over and see what pertains to, uh, money we can use from the state. We get a, we get a lot of amount of money every month, uh, from the state. And, uh.
We, I mean, we get that no matter what. That's our cut of the gas tax, right? And we just decide not to spend it.
Exactly.
No, we have to actually apply to all these things?
It does not come from local gas tax. The state pays more MFT based on how many residents we have. If we didn't have a gas station, we would still be in.
Right, right, right. But it's, it's our municipal cut of the gas.
Coming back from.
So we get a certain amount of money based on how much gas. So we get a certain amount of money based on how much gas is sold in the state.
Right.
But 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 what you have there is a list of what we're gonna use it?
Yeah, the what what I was listing was was uh, what we can use it for.
Okay.
So it it it's specific on what we can use it for, you just can't use it for anything, so.
Okay, you're right.
Yeah. So the seventy thousand also includes the engineered speeds. So that that's all part of the the contract. And so for the benefit of our newer trustees, we get so much every year, what we don't spend carries over the next year. So we have major projects, resurfacing projects that take three times as much money. We have the money set aside that we've saved over the years, so. Yeah, different different streets, like I say, Prairie View or concrete streets, uh, pavements is a lot of uh, blacktop, so they're treated differently as far as maintenance is concerned, so. The grinding of the asphalt on on the north end of town is very expensive. So we have to save up for several years in order to uh, cover the cost of that. So we've got a pretty, pretty good fund right now. If I'm not mistaken, the last I saw, I think we have maybe, Sarah, what do you think, two hundred and some thousand?
Probably, I would be like, say, yes, a hundred percent of that, for sure, but yeah, I mean, it's it's gotta be.
But that's just, that's our motor fuel tax fund and like I say, over the seventy thousand this year, if we don't spend everything, we'll roll the excess over into that fund and just keep building that fund up. Any other questions? Hey, if not, then I guess I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, it would be under resolution then.
It's twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, adopt resolution twenty seventeen. Under motor fuel tax. For year twenty twenty five, so seventy thousand dollars. Here we have a motion for ordinance for resolution twenty seventeen for the twenty twenty five, twenty six motor fuel tax expenditures. Do we have a second?
I, real quick question, why aren't we doing this during budget time? This has to be done differently than our our budget because it's MFT. I just don't remember doing this in the past, we voted separately for.
Our new engineer has really gotten on it early, uh, which is nice that we get everything put together earlier than what we we used it.
Okay.
Uh, and we can get everything into the state approved and then if anything does pop up or we would need a a change in the uh, MFT contract, we can we can put in. I think last year, if I wasn't mistaken, or maybe the year before, we had to put in for a a change order for a little more money. Something that popped up, but uh.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not understanding something. We don't just get this money into the budget and decide later what we're spending, you know? You're saying, you're saying we get a change order or something and get more money from where?
It it's through the MFT fund. Okay, so Illinois actually has a motor fuel tax fund. So all the money that's collected for motor fuel tax is goes into the Illinois fund. They may distribute it to the municipalities and cities.
Can I jump in and help out here? Um, so by regulation, we have to adopt a resolution, submit it to the state and the state has to approve it before we can spend it. And we have to define in detail the work we're doing, including things like estimated quantities of gravel and asphalt in amount we're spending in engineering. So it is not sufficient to just put in the budget MFT spending. You cannot spend a dime of MFT money without first adopting a resolution separate from your budget that gives the state all the specifics on the maximum in terms of quantities and types of work you're doing. And the state okay's that pre expenditure.
There there is also an advantage of the earlier we get this approved, the earlier we can submit our bidding. And the better chance we have of getting uh, a better bid.
Okay.
So. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution twenty seventeen for the motor fuel tax funds. Uh, do we have a second?
Okay.
We have any final questions or discussions? Uh, Carol roll call.
Joe Boyd?
Yes.
Kevin Kelly?
Yes.
Phil Morris?
Yes.
Ashley Richard?
Yes.
Natalie Schumacher?
Yes.
Okay, Marcy Carries? Phil, do you have anything else? No, I don't. Okay, next is ordinance and zoning, Ashley?
Uh, just update, I did submit some of the previous ordinances that have not not been codified. Um, I'm still working on two other ones. Uh, I just got the dates of when they were approved. And then um, do you want me to go ahead and get the pet ordinance and this other ordinance we?
Yeah, I'll send you the.
If you can send me the the PDFs, I would appreciate it and then I'll just lump some of that over to the codifiers. Otherwise, I have nothing else for me.
I would have Alison send them, but she's not here, so I won't.
Thank you.
Ashley, if it, if you have any of those you need word versions of, sometimes, like when Kathy would send them to the codifiers, sometimes they preferred word versions. Let me know, I'm glad to send you word versions too.
Okay, I did PDF documents this last go around and there was no issue, so hopefully we'll be good, but if there are, good to know, thank you.
You're welcome.
So you wanna send both unless Sarah to give give you both of them?
Okay, it's perfect.
I'll work with you tomorrow.
Sure.
Okay, you have anything else, Ashley?
Nope.
Okay. Move on to police department trustee Kevin.
Yeah, I'm just have a couple of things. The first is what I was thinking, Mark, about the interview process, I forgot to add. Thanks, Sarah, because you're involved with the Harry Onboarding, getting employed, ready to do that, so I wanna thank you as well, Sarah. Appreciate your help. And um, the second thing that I have is uh, Chief Cotty mentioned that his times, uh, reflect those basically are Ford Expedition. Uh, it is twelve years old?
Yes, well, it's thirteen now, it's twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, hundred and forty thousand miles, I've called it.
Yeah, a hundred and forty-three, a hundred and forty-four.
Okay. Um, and it's outside of the normal budget process, but what the recommendation is, is that if we can discuss it, maybe vote and allow uh, the purchase of a vehicle, if it's allowed, if everybody agrees to that, that we could um, get our order in. They have about a hundred and eight day tire lag before we actually get the vehicle. Do that, but uh, because it's in front of the budget process, the current budget process. And uh, both right now, what they're looking for, what he's requesting is a twenty twenty five Dodge Ram fifteen hundred, which is a four by four super cab. And the invoice price that we would pay would be forty-four thousand eight ninety-five. We would pay for that on the in delivery, which would be next fiscal year. And right now, we have thirty-two thousand dollars in the reserve fund. So we would need to transfer two thousand eight ninety-five from, I was suggesting it from our police training fund that we've been used to cover that. And then uh, at least we would have the funds. If people didn't move through the budget process and didn't bring anything in the reserve fund this year for the police vehicle, there'd basically be funds there that we could actually purchase the vehicle. But obviously, that's kind of, I think. Well, it's, Chief has anything else to add to that?
Um, like I say, we, we put the money in every year into the vehicle reserve. And I know we'll put, hopefully, this will, again, money, because I think that's a wise move, we pay cash for these vehicles every time. With with the turnaround time being so long, um, that's why I was requesting we do it now instead of waiting in May. The second issue is, this is a state purchase and state bid price. You can't get the vehicle cheaper anywhere. And with that being said, they will be sold out soon. I know we all love the F-150 that we have out there and I do too, it's a great vehicle. But I actually wanted to buy the Dodge last time because of those ten thousand pounds left. But they didn't have any left, so I had, and I'm happy with it. But the Dodge will sell it. And with the turnaround time of twenty-six weeks, it just takes a long time. And then I still have to get with the radios transferred, all those striped, taking all those. So it takes a while, you can't just, a lot of electronics that happen over to them. Takes a lot of time for some of the transit.
I think that's the the other point too, that Mark came in to uh, uh, discuss that with me, where he said that we would actually trade in or sell the current vehicle, so that would help offset or pay for the the new equipment? Any new equipment that we need to outfit it, it should cover most of the cost for it.
It should, I I I did a little research on the value of the expedition. Uh, we should get somewhere between fifty-five, maybe six thousand dollars for the expedition vehicle. I would expect to get that much for it. So it does cover a lot of the lack of the equipment. There's some of the equipment that we're gonna put into the Dodge will not be the same equipment that's in the expedition. Because we transition correctly and some of the uh, electronics are twenty-five years old. They're pretty much seen the license.
What if a crepe's list, or a cellulite?
The other one I was, I put it on Facebook.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, and I found a, it was a kid in Indiana that bought it. He sends me pictures of it all the time.
Oh, really?
That's what I did, that's what I did, I did this, I did that. That was a unique vehicle, so I think the expedition would be a lot easier to sell because it's just such a common vehicle. But I I I I talked to a couple of people, I know the mechanics, and I also just wanted to know, so I looked at what Carvana would give us for the vehicle. Carvana said, well, because they're gonna turn on profit, right? So that's what I'm saying, probably about fifty-five, sixty.
So with that, with that, I mean, it seems reasonable, I mean, especially when we're coming up, you guys heard the news about tariffs and things like that and might affect certain things. It seems reasonable, I think, because of the age and the mileage to replace it. I know it's outside the budget process and that's something we don't really do, but uh, I just wanna see if uh, I guess, any concerns or should wait or it's okay to do.
I would like to just add that if you make a motion to proceed with the purchase, that we include the authority for our police chief to make a decision on trade or sell for the used vehicle based on what he learns.
You you actually would have to come back and declare the used one surplus before you can convey it. So it'll take a separate, I don't remember if it's resolution ordinance. If you guys don't have a form I provided before, I can. I usually give my uh, admini- administrative staff for the bill, just kind of fill in a blank form and then you just attach what you wanna declare surplus. That's what we did the last time when chief, when the prior police car was sold.
What about on a trade in, Pat?
Still need to authorize it. Yeah, still gotta declare it surplus.
It still has to be declared surplus for a trade in, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And and Dave, it it, there's no rush to sell it because I, we need to use it until we get the new one. So it'll be a while before, you don't have to do the resolution right away, I guess, is what I, what I'm saying. Good next meeting.
Straight my recommendation.
Yeah, so I, yeah, if there's any, I guess, discussions or questions or? Okay, I guess on that, I will uh, make a motion to order a twenty twenty-five Dodge Ram fifteen hundred four by four super cab for the amount of forty-four thousand eight ninety-five to pay uh, next fiscal year.
So we have a motion, we have a motion to proceed with the purchase of a new police truck. Uh, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Do we have any final questions or discussion?
Um, you know what, since there isn't money in that line, Sarah, do I need to transfer money now or are we okay to?
You mean that, I think that we're okay to wait at this point because I'm not paying it anytime soon.
Okay, so we're good, okay.
I would think, I would think, since we're not gonna be paying it anytime soon in this fiscal year, we should be okay.
Okay.
Well, if we have to, we could, we would need to do something to do that. That's our thumbs up, so.
So we don't pay until we get deliveries, a lot of weekends, but.
Yeah.
And we'll just move the money from our reserve account to.
To there. Yeah, okay.
Get that ready, so any other questions or discussion? Matt, Carol roll call.
Joe Boyd?
Yes.
Kevin Kelly?
Yes.
Phil Morris?
Yes.
Ashley Richard?
Yes.
Natalie Schumacher?
Yes.
All right.
That's all I have.
That's okay, thank you, Kevin. Uh, next is Laurie Department trustee Joe.
I put a line on here about mismatch meters again, I think last month when we approved the consent agenda, the bills were in there, Sarah put them in there, so we did need to do this separately. Sarah, do you notice it?
That's what I, you know, it was part of the monthly bill.
Was it consent too, I didn't actually look.
You know, I sent it out, but it wasn't actually in the bills yet because I don't put it in till it's approved, but I don't think that, you know, it's the whole board.
Okay, well, we.
Do you, so I would say you wanna approve it.
So I I lost track, did we find one more?
Just one more.
And and does anybody wanna know the amount, do we have to have the amount?
It'd be good to have the.
Just out of curiosity.
Okay, okay.
It's like three thousand twenty-four dollars and some odd cents, so just over three thousand dollars. It was less than thirty-one hundred, I can tell that for sure.
And we, we did find one, I think, in this last month where the meters were the other direction. And so we've been under billing a resident?
Yes.
We're not gonna try to get any money out of that resident because that was our mistake, right? So but for many, many years, we've been getting less money than we should out of this person. So we hopefully don't find too many more of those because we, you know, we did lose money there, how, if anybody wants to discuss that or anything, but unfortunately, we had somebody installing meters that didn't know what they were doing.
It was three thousand twenty-four dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay. So so is there another, does anybody wanna discuss the meters at all in general, at all, or?
I mean, there's nothing we can really do about it.
Really?
And like, they're fixing it as far as going through and.
It's just the right thing to give money back.
Yeah.
Recharge it, people, yeah, not gonna drive it out of my back, but that seems wrong, so.
Yeah.
We're just trying to make right a mistake we made a long time ago. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to to pay three thousand twenty-four.
Ninety dollars and ninety-six cents.
And ninety-six cents back to a resident that we've been overbilling for water because of a mismatch meter.
We have a motion to refund money from a mismatched water meter, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any final questions or discussions? Matt, Carol roll call.
Joe Boyd?
Yes.
Kevin Kelly?
Yes.
Phil Morris?
Yes.
Ashley Richard?
Yes.
Natalie Schumacher?
Yes.
Okay, Joe, the other thing I had was, uh, we we talked about this a bit before about some way to pay people, uh, you know, time and a half or some policy that that is different than what we have. I I sent I sent you all what we have, the current thing before about overtime. And it basically is overtime, it's like if you go over forty hours a week or go over eight hours a day, you know, we pay time and a half. And what Denny was requesting is that, um, I talked to Chief Chief Cotty earlier and I like, I like the words he was using, I've been searching for the words. He said in other places, he's running to call this uh, call out, call out pay. So we can have a call out policy where if we have to call people out to fix a water pipe or maybe Chief Cotty has to call people up because there's a storm or something, you know, I don't know. Uh, but something outside their regular scheduled shift. It would be nice, I think, if we had a policy that said if we call someone else, I'm gonna suggest that we can come up with whatever, you know, whatever people agree to. But you know, maybe we guarantee people four hours of pay at time and a half, for instance. And I mean, the one point I wanna make right off is that we might not do this at all in a whole year, right? We're not talking about much money here. We're talking about actually emergencies, if either water main breaks or something rare happened with the police. Where to to me, it's more of a, you know, telling the employee, we value your time and, you know, if if we have to have you do this something extra, right, we wanna make sure you feel like your time was valued and that we didn't call you up for an hour or, you know. So I actually said to everybody stuff about this before, I hope you read it. Does anybody wanna discuss this at all, you know, I think it's just like not a good idea or maybe. Does anybody want to discuss this at all, you know, I think it's, it's like not a good idea or maybe it's too much, we could do two hours guaranteed. I think like anything, we'd call somebody out for, you'd probably be there for two hours, I'm probably not calling somebody out for that short. Um, I mean, it takes many hours to fix a water, right? And then, you know, this would even, you know, we, we make Sarah help with, with oil notices and stuff too, right? And, and, uh, so this would apply to all the workers, I think, maybe, maybe everyone except the police chief. That the police chief has management or something, Mark could explain that to, because he gets to hire people. Um, but, you know, I mean, I think we could apply this to even Denny, right? Right now in our policy, it's like Denny's exempted because he's a supervisor, but now that he's hourly, um, and doesn't have any management duties. I don't know why he wouldn't be able to get time. Does he get time and a half now? If he works over and he just never works over because he doesn't want to work over or?
If he works over, he takes his time off at an hour, like at time and a half.
Oh, okay, okay, so he's basically kind of.
I'm not sure, I mean, he's administrative and he's management, I mean, he does supervise the employees, I mean.
Yeah.
I see it as, 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 that the hot topic was going here to just, I mean.
All the.
Yeah, so like, wouldn't, wouldn't it be like a, I guess, wouldn't it be like a scenario that you're thinking of? I think I know what you're, but just.
I was, the biggest one for me is, is having a water main break and we need people and it's like ten degrees outside and it's, you know, really nasty day. You might just ignore that phone call.
Yeah.
If you, you know, couldn't, couldn't, you know, if you didn't feel like, you know, your hard work was appreciated, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking what I would think. If I was, you know, one of these guys. Um, I, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, when we're calling these guys for special stuff and interrupting their day, we're saying, look, we'll pay you at least four hours, we'll pay you time and a half if you come in. And like I said, I don't see it as a budget really issue at all because I don't think it's going to be used much, so it's not, it's not like we're talking about a lot of money here. It's just a, you know, policy of, hey, if we, if we make you come in for something, we'll pay you.
So like, so I think with the policy now, I mean, I always remember, I think there was one, there was one issue where there was a, a, um, somebody, um, on their service line, I think they were excavating and they didn't get the tooling on that and then they, I think, I think Denny and Mark and I think there's other issues that were in on Friday to the weekend, I think, on that type of thing. I mean, that's what you're kind of, are you kind of referring to, are you petitioning for that too, right?
I think we have to really define like what, what constitutes an emergency and who's making that decision. Because while I fully trust Denny is going to make those, I don't know who's going to be there next or who else is going to be deciding that like, well, today it's this and, you know.
I think that's a little hard because you could let it leak, right? Then it could forfeit the small to you because let it leak into normal business hours. I, I feel like that's somewhat of a, of a, uh, a personnel issue, maybe you deal with later, right?
Yeah.
And if somebody starts going too many emergencies, like everything's worth it, that seems like a personnel issue you gut person afterwards and say, hey, don't do this, you're.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's kind of a separate issue.
The other one that came up when we talked about last time was like snow removal versus a leaky pipe. To me, like, we know as snow starts coming and we can shift our hours in order to cover a snow, or do we consider that an emergency that you get paid at double time or four hours?
Yeah, that's, like, like I say, like, Denny, Denny likes to come in and do the snow early and then he.
And then go home, yeah. Yeah.
So it's like. Yeah, I don't know what, it, it's easy when you just say overtime because it's, did you work over forty and those cases he doesn't.
Uh huh.
It's like, yeah, those cases where you come in on call and flood the snow.
But then do you still have to work there, yeah.
I'm okay with it because, again, I don't think it's a lot of money, but I could, you know, I, that's for discussion, I don't know what people think. I mean, if you're getting up at three o'clock to jump out of the streets, I'm happy to pay you time and a half personally, but other people could say different.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Mark and, well, Chief, we've talked about like a police, um, not with this specific example, but other ones. And we talked about like how the police chief schedules the employees and his flexibility, because it's like, okay, as a police chief, he has the authority to schedule people, do that as, which, I think that's a little bit of a different scenario, scenario to do that and I know they're tied, but Sarah, for like, for, for our ATR personal policy, if somebody comes in and works the overtime, but they have, can they with their options, can they get overtime? Is it overtime paid, is it overtime bank at time and a half or is it double or is it just time and a half?
By the way, time and a half.
Yeah.
So either, that's during the same pay period, you're going to take that time off. So, uh, so, yeah, so either you could be paid or you could take that time off.
So if we're working over, so if it just extends through the night, I guess, and I'm, I don't have a thought this through, but if they extend it through the night and they're working over the forty hour work weekend away, there are maybe going to get time and a half for that. So are you saying that maybe we should provide an additional incentive to that overtime that they normally would get? Uh, because of that.
I don't think so, I mean, the only question there would be whether if they work overtime, are we guaranteeing that at least four hours worth? I don't, that's, that's a question, I guess.
And I think that, is it mostly what we're trying to insist, some type is not our full-time employees. It's our part-time employees that we need to come in and help Denny with these things. So what do they get right now? If they come in and if they haven't met their forty hours, say they're only scheduled for twenty hours.
I think they're getting straight time, I think.
Yeah, they just get straight time.
Yeah.
So even that's the scenario that we want to.
Yeah, and Kevin hit the point of we, we probably need a second employee right now, we wouldn't have so many part-timers we're depending on to constantly save us. But right now, we're kind of depending on part-timers to save us a bit when we have problems. So, so that's a separate issue, I guess, but. Yeah, so when you start thinking about all the corner cases, it gets difficult, but does anyone have any thoughts on paying people time, like, like establishing a call-in policy or something, say, if people are called in?
Yeah, Pat is still here.
Ask you.
If Pat.
Yep.
Do you have any thoughts on this because I'm sure you've been through something like that.
Yeah, I have a lot of communities that have gone to adopting a, a call-out policy. Um, and I could probably get you some examples of, of how other communities have defined things like, you know, an emergency or exigent circumstances that would create eligibility under the policy. Um, and a lot of times it's designed to be, you know, you get a minimum amount of pay and/or you get a, a higher rate, you know, just, uh, for the reasons you guys discussed. So sometimes it's time and a half or double time and you get a guaranteed minimum of two hours pay if you come in, so that if you're mobilizing to shut off a service for ten minutes, you still get fair compensation to make it worth travel, so. Yeah, uh, other communities do it and I can get you some samples to help you guys along in the process, if that'd be beneficial.
That'd be great, Pat, if you get us those, we can, we can, I can send those around to people and we'll go from there.
Sounds good, I'll do that.
So, yeah, we don't have to vote on anything, but we'll, I'll, I'll try to go with the actual suggested text or something and send that around and go from there. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Uh, next is public property, trustee Natalie.
I don't have a ton, but just updates, um, I am still trying to get back at home with the women's club to set up a meeting with Officer Cotty. And, um, Denny and I talked about their summer activities with fireworks and things that they're wanting to do. We have some concerns with setting that up and just seeing what happens, so working on that meeting. Uh, and then our Little League registration went live today, so that is for kindergarten through third grade. Uh, and that's open, there will be an article in the Quill about it as well. And, uh, we already have big people signed up, including four coaches, which was my biggest concern, was getting adults to want to coach, but it's going well so far. Um, I do have, I have a sample of a sponsor letter, so I know we had talked at one point about local businesses sponsoring teams. Um, I don't know if I need to share that with Pat or if there's any kind of legal. I know when the Lions Club did it, like, they're just, they're an organization that could take in sponsors and help those kinds of things. I don't know if there's any specific rules with a government agency running and getting sponsors for sports teams.
No, I, there's, there's nothing, um, particularly especially after be mindful of other than just, you know, making sure the money gets in the corporate coffers and is handled the way you would, you know, any other revenue to the village. But no, there's no special precautions you need to take to take on sponsorships for the Little League.
Um, so, yeah, so I have a letter drafted that I can send if people want to look at it before, but I was going to otherwise just send it out to, um, several different companies, their businesses in town. Not sure how many teams we're going to have yet, but, um, getting a couple of people interested, then we would just put like their logo on the back of the shirts for the younger team.
I did get an email today from somebody in town interested in sponsoring, so.
Perfect, yeah, I put that on the flyer that went out today as well, if you're interested in sponsoring, contact us. Um, so, overall, that is all going well. I am going to get ahold of the Lions Club here yesterday, it was so nice, reminded me of the getting out to ball field and cleaning out some of the, um, storage things in the garage by the shed. So, uh, I'll get ahold of them soon if it gets nicer and get kind of transferred over the things that they were donating to us. The currents, or not the currents, the Corvins brought over, the pitching machine they purchased from the Lions Club, so we have that now as well. Otherwise.
Have you heard anything from Amarin on the power port?
I have not, I just thought about that, I can check in with them, they were supposed to be starting end of January, beginning of February, so right about now.
I don't know, if they go in now, they're going to really tear things up.
Yeah. Do we, I haven't looked, do we know ours, all the current stuff out of there now? I think.
Light, there's still a light in the tree.
Tree, like the big tree is there and the towers thing is there.
Okay. I will follow up on this.
Do we have any questions for Natalie? If not, the next item on the agenda is liquor commissioner report, which is me, and I have nothing for liquor commissioning. Uh, next is moving in closed session if necessary, when we have nothing, so we will skip that. Do any of the trustees have any other business for tonight or any other communications you want to share? There's one other thing I want to share, it's the McLean County mayor's meeting. Uh, the county, McLean County had people there to talk about where the change to the airport is and getting the trustees for that. And that has not gone real smooth, uh, still working on that. I also talked about the project that they have for getting high-speed internet to rural McLean County with rural being anything other than blue to normal. And the grant money for that has been approved and will start coming this spring. And so there will be vendors out in the country running fiber this spring. They may need to go through town, uh, they have to run fiber from the north into town to the south, they could go through town. Uh, in some towns, they may run new fiber to the residents, uh, which would be a another option as far as internet and that, as far as I know, is not decided yet for Hudson. But, uh, there, that's where we're at with that, I think it's an exciting project and I live where Denny is, Denny's got hopeful getting, you know, fiber for within the next few years, so I think that's a real, real good step that they're doing. So. I'll leave it at that, uh, anyone else has any additional business, is anybody, uh, ready to adjourn? I would like to adjourn, you know, motion we have a second. Carol roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Natalie Schumacher.
Yes.